I just can't work these hours.
We acknowledge your presence and love and we pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give our council members the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. Amen and pray. Amen.
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
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 Simpson?
Here.
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 Lizbeth?
A verbal of minutes January 21st for any parents or missions. In reading communications, I have two this evening. The first one is a certificate of appreciation that we received from the village of East Palestine. Says, "Whereas the city of Columbia offered assistance to the village of East Palestine during the water emergency of 2014, therefore, I do hereby urge all citizens of our village to join in expressing our gratitude to the city of Columbia for offering help to East Palestine during the water emergency of 2014. Time is 16th day of January 2014. Peter Montalino, Village Manager." And I have a second letter from the Chamber of Commerce regarding establishment of bed tax in the city of Columbia. Dear Mayor Blake from the Columbia area Chamber of Commerce promotes a growth and investment environment for local business and business ownership in our community. Our membership roster pops 287 enterprises, margin small, representing families, civic, and commercial organizations in our area. Future development of the city of Columbia forecasted the time is right to establish direct benefits between that government and our community. A bed tax offers one way to create that direct benefit. Tax assesses a percentage fee for overnight motel guests as the city shares tax revenue with the local business bureau. Thus, bed tax creates a link between the development and reinvestment in the community. The Chamber of Commerce has worked with many community leaders to establish an organization well-suited to link with the city and leveraging any revenues generated by the bed tax at Columbia Area Tourism Bureau. Chamber of Commerce established Tourism Bureau as a subcommittee in 2010. In 2012, Tourism Bureau filed articles of incorporation established by law as elected officers. Was assigned an employer identification under by the IRS and filed for 501(c)(3) status. Tourism Bureau is organized to, one, promote tourism within the city of Columbia and Fairfield Township; two, educate the local public as to the value and importance of tourism to our area; three, promote the development of tourism-related businesses. Tourism Bureau currently organizes, promotes, and operates the following events throughout the calendar year. One, springtime in Columbia; two, Columbia and Wine Festival; three, Harvey S. Myers Men's Park Festival with the artists; and four, Joy of Christmas Drive through Light Show. To date, these events have been funded through the Chamber and community sponsors. With that funding and inspired partnership between the city and dedicated volunteers, these events have exceeded our expectations. However, in doing so, we have reached our maximum capacity under current funding sources. Bed tax revenue offers the opportunity to further expand tourism-related promotions in our area. Several different political subdivisions with overlapping jurisdictions are authorized to institute a bed tax. Action by city council ensures that any bed tax revenue will remain in our community under local control. Therefore, the Chamber urges council to adopt an ordinance establishing a bed tax. The Chamber has investigated other local governments within the county who have already adopted such legislation. The village of Lisbon presents a template most suitable for Columbia. A copy of Lisbon ordinance with suggested modifications is imposed for your consideration. The Chamber of Commerce requests city council consider adopting such an ordinance. And we welcome the opportunity to discuss this with you, city council or other city officials. Respectfully, Dave Barby, co-chair of Business Development Committee, and Virginia Perkins, co-chair of Business Development Committee. And several people are here and think maybe we can hear from you under recognition of personal desire to appear. There are no reports of commissions or board. I think before we get into others already slated on here, Mr. Guy, you'd ask if you could step up and you want to present something?
I'm Jack. I'm Jack Guy, and I'm here once again to ask for council's blessing to run the Fourth of July program in Firestone Farm. We have an all-day program that we've been running and it starts at 8:30 in the morning with fish and derby by the High Valley Anglers. And we have canoe races with Boy Scouts, and we have games in the afternoon, a pet parade, ice cream eating contest, watermelon eating contest, skydivers, camp field band, and another band for the evening. And a few other things I've probably forgotten, but culminates by fireworks by B.J. Allen. Fireworks, fan fireworks, gun fireworks. We would once again ask your blessing and help us promote this program. Thank you.
I think it's always a great idea.
I'd like to move to do that. Second, we'd like to thank Mr. Guy and his crew that work all day to do this, for many days.
Months.
I'm very retired. Been a lot of years.
Anything else, D.M.?
Patrick?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Shoniger?
Challenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, under personal desire, the beer crystals can be evolved regarding five K of Firestone Farms on July 13, 2014.
All right, we want to bring a new race to the community, in addition to the other ones we already do. This one is the Firestone Farms 5K. We are actually looking to bring this one out to the community out there in the Southern 14 area, hence the name Firestone Farms. It's Sunday, July 13th, and we're looking at starting it probably at the banquet center, running the streets up in that area, possibly out towards Hack Row, and just a typical 5K like we normally do. And looking at the 8:00 AM race start time, 9:00 AM awards, and yeah, the usual. So, just wanted to get your blessings and support behind this event. I did talk to the homeowners association out there already. They have given their approval. And talked to Kevin Claus, and he didn't have any issues. He didn't think there would be any issues with traffic and stuff out there. So, I think we're good to go in that regard.
You were talking about partially running it through the development, maybe using some of the golf course.
Yeah, if we could work that out, we would like to utilize some of the golf course and the trails that they have out there. We're still in the planning stages of that. If all goes well, we'll be offering brunch to our runners too, but we're still in the negotiations on that.
We were walking the very hill.
Yeah, well, you know, we put on the Halloween half marathon, so I don't think we're afraid of hills. Do you have any specific questions?
Do you want to make a motion?
So moved with the coordination with police department.
I'll second that. D.M.
Silver?
Yes.
Redbein?
Yes.
Shoniger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to say thank you. I think we've spoken a couple times. Some of these races, you bring in hundreds of people to the city, correct?
Yes, yes. Our record is almost 400 runners for just a one-hour event, so it's definitely...
A lot of them will stay in town and spend their money here.
Spend their money eating, and I know we've had people stay at the Dutch Inn. So, we do generate more than just profit for the community in one day.
Very nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Jay Myers from Campbell, Ohio regarding Campbell, Ohio. Just going to give us an overview of the program.
This is 45 pages. I'm not going to, because like I said, 10 or 15 minutes, so I'm going to try and hit the highlights. And then I can talk as long as you want, so if you have questions. I'm just going to try and give you basically an AMP 101. My name is Jay Myers. I'm the regional marketing rep for American Municipal Power in this area. Used to be AMP Ohio, now it's seven states, so it's AMP. Got topics of discussion is about AMP, about our power supply strategy. Later on, at the back, there's some plans and accounting programs, customer programs, and member services programs. I probably don't have time to cover those in detail, but if you guys have the presentation, I just live in Streetsboro. I can come back pretty easily and talk at another time and learn on some of these other things. AMP did start as American Municipal Power Ohio or AMP though back in 1971. Kind of an interesting little side fact, though, is in 1964, the 21 communities in northeast Ohio that operate municipal systems, Columbia being one of them, formed this organization called the WCOE, or the Wholesale Customers of Ohio Edison, and banded together to get a bulk power contract to get power at a better rate than each one could do individually. And that was in 1964, so that predates AMP, the formation of AMP by seven years. Actually, us guys up in northeast Ohio were the precursor to AMP. It's a nonprofit. We have the ability to do tax-exempt financing for the members. We have a large presence down in the industry. I say it's not AMP Ohio anymore, it's AMP. We have members in Ohio, Pennsylvania, Michigan, Virginia, Kentucky, West Virginia, and Delaware. Our footprint covers two of the large regional transmission organizations, MISO, which stands for Midwest Independent System Operator, and PJM, which is Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Maryland. And that's the transmission operator that governs us, and that runs from New York City to Chicago. AMP is all about the members. It is you guys. It's Kaoga Falls, it's Newton Falls, it's Paintsville. It's the members that are AMP. We kind of tend to lose sight of that fact now since AMP's gotten big, but it's still basically about members making decisions for themselves on where to procure power supply. 129 members in seven states, over 625,000 individual retail customers. There are financial criteria that's been established for new members coming into the organization. They have to pass pre-earthers credit test, so you just can't say, "I want to be a member of AMP." And become a member, you have to have some guidance. We're just like the systems we buy power for. We're governed by home rule. The membership is open to power supply only members. We don't have too many. Most are full-service members. There are a couple members, CEBEC, which is Central Virginia Electric Cooperative, and NSCPA, which is Michigan South Central Power Agency, just like AMP. For the most part, AMP is municipal electric systems like Columbia. Each state or joint action agency with fire or water members in it though can have a seat on AMP Board of Trustees. Columbia is part of the Northeast AMP service group, and your board rep right now is Wattsburg. You have pretty good representation on the AMP Board of Trustees in this area. Newton Falls is on the board, Kaoga Falls, Borlum, and Dover, all fairly close proximity to you guys. They're all on AMP Board of Trustees. This is just a visual representation of what AMP looks like on the map. It's still primarily in Ohio, but there are quite a few members in Pennsylvania, New Michigan, Virginia, a couple in West Virginia, Kentucky. Getting back to the AMP Board, we're on page seven now. AMP Board Trustees consists of seven communities, community representatives. Twelve of these trustees are the rank groups, Northeast AMP group, the Western group, the Northern group. And they're elected by caucus, by just the people in that rank group. There are eight at-large seats. These are elected by the general membership. They're three-year terms. There's four of them up this year. I encourage everybody to come down to the AMP Board meeting and see where the business gets done. That's where all the projects get started. That's where they get discussed. That's where they get vetted. The board meets on the third, typically the third and Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday each month. Everybody's welcome to come sit in and listen. One time you chew you out of theirs when you go into executive session. It's a great opportunity to learn how the organization operates. Some of the strengths of the organization, you know, as it's gotten bigger, a lot of people tend to think of or have a hard time even distinguishing between AMP and AEP, but there is still a difference. We still are a member-based organization, a nonprofit. We exist solely to provide services to the members, and it is the members. We do get into some generation development now. Years ago, we were strictly market-based, but that proved to be kind of risky as power costs were going up in the market. So, now we are trying to develop our own assets, and we're well along the road to that goal. Still have some market power available, but get out of the risk of being in the market and taking control of our own destiny, basically. AMP has a $750 million line of credit that can provide on behalf of financing to its members. We are in the midst of some project development right now. We're in the midst of developing over 350 megawatts of running river hydro on the Ohio River. Some fairly good-sized projects, the biggest hydro development going on in the country right now. A little bit on the energy authority. This is an organization which deals in mainly gas commodities, and we got associated with them as the Fremont plant came online. They handle our gas hedging and gas procurement projects, or contracts for that project. But they also do some other things like keep track of what's going on in PJM, and they take care of some risk management strategies for us. We're still, you know, we still offer a lot of other services, but bottom line, we're still about power supply. We kind of take the mutual fund approach and not put all your eggs in one basket. We're a full or partial power supplier requirement for 124 members as well as a few partners. I had mentioned CEBEC and NSCPA. We tend to divide our members into groups or pools. Columbia is part of what we call a northern power pool. There's the western pool, and there's the homemade, which is a higher municipal electric generators. The advantages of these pools is that it makes it a lot easier for the guys down dispatch centers to predict load and buy or sell power in the day-ahead markets. It also allows for us some economies of scale when it comes to buying power and contracts. And it results in lower administrative costs as opposed to trying to administer, keeping track of 124 members day by day what they think they're going to need for power the next day. They lump them into pools and it makes it a lot easier and a lot more accurate. Power supply planning, we do long-term, short- and medium-term load forecasting and planning. We do capacity and energy planning and transmission resource planning. We also, as I mentioned earlier, do involve heavily in developing the projects, which right now, the big thing, as I mentioned earlier, are the hydros. We will probably look at doing some peaking projects this year, possibly some solar again since it's becoming attractive.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What percentage of the time does a hydro plant on the river you expect to produce electricity?
About 56%.
So, you still need the gas or the oil or coal?
Well, we do with the JV5. They're backed up with diesel generators, so it's delivered at 100%. Going out in the future with the EPA and Rice-Nishap ruling on diesel generators, we're just going to let the hydros produce what they produce, and it's typically 56% availability.
So, you still need the natural gas or coal?
Say again?
You still need natural gas, coal, or...?
Yeah, I mean, it's just like renewable energy, you know, solar and wind is great, but when the solar, you know, when the sun's not shining, the wind's not blowing, you still want to have something backing that up.
What percentage of the time, I'm off the subject, does a coal plant run?
Coal plants are typically 85% to 87% available.
Okay, I'll let you go ahead. Go ahead.
No, that's fine. I said I could talk all night. I said I'm trying to keep it short for you guys. We try to balance our base load, intermediate load, and peaking resources. And I'm going to talk about that on the next page, what those are. We also try to diversify the fuels, the technology, the location of the resources, and mix of contracts and ownership. So, here again, it's that mutual fund approach, not all your eggs in one basket. Now, this is, this picture is an hourly load curve for a typical member for the year. As you can see, everything below that yellow line is what we call base load for 24/7. And you can buy that as a power commodity on the market. They sell it 24/7 and a 5x16. That's seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And those kind of resources are typically your higher capital cost, like coal plant, new plant, hydro plant. But that's, those are seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Next band, in between a yellow line and the red line, is what we call intermediate power or peak power, or 5x16. And that's the power where you're using money through Friday from 7:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night. And that's a different resource. If you go on the stock market, you can buy a 5x16 commodity. And everything above that line is what we call peak power, and those are your cheapest capital. You know, it's a diesel generator or a gas turbine, a combustion turbine. But they're more expensive to run fuel-wise, but the thing is, they don't have to run that much. They're only on the summer and during the hot part of the day, or if you see they're out towards the end of the graph a little bit in winter time when people are using their space heaters. And that's typically our three types of power, base load, intermediate, and peaking. Back to that purchase versus ownership, you know, we try and maintain a balance of that. It's prudent to not, again, put all your eggs in one basket. There are some advantages to power contracts, power purchases. It's a firm price. It's a schedule. It's going to be there when you need it. You don't have to worry about dispatching. It's a shorter term, typically three years to five years. Sometimes it'll go on as long as 10 years. But it's lower credit requirements. You don't have to do those collateral, you have to do the collateral posting, but you don't have to go through the bond rating agencies to get a loan. But another downside is their energy only. There's no capacity associated with them, and that's a piece of your power bill that you've seen here in the last two years since we moved into PJM. Never had that before deregulation, but now you're seeing capacity charges on your bill, which is a cost that we have no control over, that's governed by PJM and FERC. Then asset ownership, okay, the advantages. Well, in the long term, they're flexible, so we can dispatch anywhere in the markets. They do provide that stall capacity, so you don't have to go out and buy the capacity to back it up in a contract. We have control of the asset. They're firm, and there might be some price fluctuation coming out of the output due to fuel prices. But the downside is you have the risk of ownership, so if it breaks, you've got to fix it.
You're about there.
Couple more. I do want to get, anytime we do a project, there's a complete due diligence process. It takes sometimes years to get these projects to the point where we bring them to a city council with an ordinance asking you to look it over and vote on it. But there's two years of work that goes in before it gets to that point. And this is Columbia's portfolio, which is what it looks like now. Looks like you're pretty in shape up to about 2020. Those hatch lines represent areas where there's not a contract or a project that you have to supply power. Most people think we're going to see these fairly attractive power prices on the market for at least next three years or so. We'll be looking out ahead as that graph moves this way. They might be looking to lock you into something to secure that, those blank spaces going out into the future. And then this last section is all projects from NIBA on, or projects you're involved in. I'll let you look through those if you're eager. I just want to flip to the very back page. Just kind of list some of the other things we do besides power supply. A lot of these already covered in your fees. Some of them are, you know, are pay extra, like lineman training, they pay extra for that. Engineering services, but very competitive for the most part, and it's something you just send an RFP out and submit back a bid like any other consultant. I guess at this point in time, I'll just throw out some questions.
Past 2020, what are you working on?
I don't get all the machinations of what goes on down at campus, but, you know, I'm sure I'm going to see some more... I'm sure we'll see some more pressure from the environmental side of it from the EPA. We may be looking at renewables. We do have some wind. You'll see you guys are in the Blue Creek Wind Project. Maybe some more wind available. Solar's looking a lot more attractive because the price is coming down and it's a great peaking asset. If you get it behind your ear, you knock down the transmission costs, and that's another cost that we don't have any control over that seems to be going up or the transmission cost. If you can knock that peak down, put something behind your ear, the utility, investor in the utility doesn't see your actual load, that helps your transmission cost.
So on that graph, you have 1.5% growth. What if it only grows at 1%? Will it go past you?
We have, well, we, every year, we're trying to use every year, we get together with you and go over what future needs are, and that's one of the things you give input. It's like, you think that 1.5% is an active?
No, I'm saying we could suppose it would be wrong. Would we go past 2020 then if you didn't grow that much?
No, we look at, we look at your power needs every year. So it's a moving target. Now, right now, you're in pretty good shape. Couple years down the line, we'll be looking out to see what we can do to fill in those blanks.
I have a question that's more just generic AMP related. I know there are several people in the room that have personally asked me, and I don't always have the answer for it, but, and this is an honest question that I've received. What is the benefit of AMP? What does AMP bring the residents of the city? And I know that's a big question, but I receive a lot. I don't know if you guys think that's why I heard it. Why don't you actually explain that?
Well, back to that, you know, it's basically local control. You are the ones that drive AMP. If you've got questions, you've got problems, you want to come down to the board meetings, supply input, it's just like a city council meeting. You set your own rates. It's the same thing. We try and do, we take input from the members, try and get them the best prices on contracts and projects, and come up with the best mix of prices and contracts to keep everybody's costs down. Now, there are a lot of costs that we don't have any control over: transmission, capacity, some of the ancillary charges you see on your bill that are levied on us from here to PJM or the investor on your teller. But we're trying to keep that power supply component to the, you know, lowest we possibly can. And I think local, just the local control, the input, you can get on the AMP, sit on a board meeting and say, excuse me, I'd like some explanation on that.
I think getting active though is one of the major benefits, just the ability for a large number of utilities together.
Oh, absolutely.
Buy power and bulk.
Just the economies of the city.
Keep a great city by itself and do it on their own.
And you might be able to go out and say, you know, I'm going to go to Exelon and get a five-year power contract. And you might say, okay, we'll give it to you for $62 a megawatt hour. But you're only buying five megawatts, maybe four megawatts. We go out and we look to say, Exelon, we'd like a 10-year contract. We'd like it to be under $150, and we need 150 megawatts. So we have that bulk buying ability.
The question that I get, and I understand the local control side, we'll be able to set our rates and have us be able to deliver this quickly, and those pieces. A lot of times I'll get a question like, why AMP, what, and not OhioAS? And not begin, I know that they're two totally different things, but several people in the room don't understand the difference between those things. One AMP is allowing the city to have control of setting rates, buying and controlling it and doing it all ourselves compared to turning it over to an OhioAS, where we would have those things on the matter, correct? And that is a benefit.
The rates aren't really any different. I'm sorry, Brian, but the rates aren't really any different from what I pay now with AMP here in the city than what they are for people who have AEP in OhioAS. The rates are pretty much almost exactly the same. So financially, there's no difference for us as residents.
Come into the difference where there's no difference in price, then you've got to look at your reliability in response time to outages. I'm a FirstEnergy customer myself. You know, I paid 13 and a half cents kilowatt hour. You know, I don't know what you guys charge your customers, but.
Eleven six.
That's less than $12.
Eleven six. It was eleven six.
At FirstEnergy, I pay 13 and a half cents.
But there's really not that much of a difference. So we essentially. I will give credit where credit's due, though.
Granted, there's not the disparity in rates that there was 10 years ago, but a lot of that is due to forces beyond our control. So the capacity markets have developed since deregulation, and the transmission costs at First Energy's just went to PUC and asked for a $2 billion upgrade to their transmission system. Guess who's going to be paying for that? So.
Well, who pays for the projects that you guys do?
The members for the subscription.
So then that eventually falls into our laps.
Yeah, well, here again, if you decide you don't want to get into that contract, that project, you don't have to get into it.
But the more members that you have, the better off it's going to be.
Because it spreads out.
There you go.
Because I'll give credit where it's due, like the public works guys, I've had two issues with my powers in the last year that I've worked here, and they have responded quickly. And both times, I had to call the after-hours number, and they were there. I mean, I had power restored within two hours, I think.
That's, you know, that's important, especially to your commercial customers. You're starting to measure outages in days now for some of the investors in the weeks, typically under your unit systems as hours. So that's going to become bigger as prices, as prices become more equal, that will become a bigger factor.
We just don't see a lot of the numbers on the backside.
Well, that's not it, though.
I know. That's why I'm saying, we just don't see a lot of that.
I don't, we don't have to go a lot deeper into it, but I wanted anyone, since you're here, to answer a question. That is a question that I receive often, the benefit of doing it ourselves versus not. And so I figure if you're a good person to ask that question.
With AMP, you have, you have the whole organization behind you. And we're back to that economies of scale. We can go out and buy a lot cheaper than you could as an individual unit.
Very good.
There's been, I know a couple of years ago, there was a law passed that required a certain percent of power generation to, by some timeframe, to be from green energy. And I read recently that there's been a little bit of backing away from that.
That was in that, and the municipal systems weren't subject to that. That was strictly for the investor's, although we do have a pretty good mix of our vehicles in our portfolio, vis a vis the Blue Creek Wind Farm and the hydros, Napoleon Solar. But we did it just because our members wanted us to get involved in renewables, not because it was legislated. But yeah, FirstEnergy and AEP weren't real happy with that. So I think that's, they're using their lobbying expertise to try and get that lifted from them, but I don't think they're going to be successful. If anything, I see it being living on everybody at some point in the future, even in unions. So we'll be, we're ahead of that game right now. A lot of our members are already at that 25%.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. I said I just live in streets for a while. I can come back after you digest this.
Thank you.
What are your meetings in Columbus?
Say again?
You said, anyway.
What meetings are in Columbus? Yes. 1111 Struck Road.
Nice to hear this. I was told possibly someone in the Chamber of Commerce would want to return to the letter.
Hi, David Barbie. I'm co-chairman of the Business Development Committee in the Chamber of Commerce. And I wanted to follow up on the letter. The letter is to hopefully get a discussion going about that, and let me make sure that we're all clear about the discussion we're having. The proposal is not to tax any existing businesses that, you know, with a bed tax. For instance, you might be thinking of Dutch Village Inn. The Dutch Village Inn pays a bed tax to Mahoning County because they're in Mahoning County. And it's my understanding, and I'll refer to my esteemed colleague here, because my understanding that the bed taxes, that this would not stack on top of another one. The idea is the first political subdivision taxing authority to place the bed tax, that takes precedence in all other potential bed taxes around. So for instance, the Dutch Village Inn would not be subject to a bed, to an additional tax. The idea is that, we're trying to think ahead and think that, you know, if there's a possibility of some sort of another hotel or something like that coming in, there's two things that are certain in life: death and taxes. And some taxing authority, if they see the opportunity for revenue, just like Mahoning County did when the Dutch Village Inn went in, they placed a bed. Some taxing authority is going to sweep in and put the bed tax in. We would like to see that if that were to happen, that the funds for that would stay here locally. The way bed taxes are set up by statute is the taxing authority splits the tax with another entity that is devoted to tourism-related activities, to conventionary and visitor bureau. And it's in that sense that we're proposing that there would be a bed tax and that the entity that would share in the revenues and be responsible for promoting tourism in our area would be the Tourism Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce is doing that right now. It's the idea of being proactive rather than letting something, something happen and then being caught off guard by some other taxing authority beating us to it. With that, I think that's all I have. If you have any questions for me, I know we're still in the discussion stage, and I think Mr. Willard has had the letter also and is working on it as well, but that's where we're at. If you have a question for him, maybe have an answer for somebody else.
The little question, the tax rate you have, is that because that's what other areas do, or could that be set at 1%, 2%, 3%? What do you want to set it at?
I think, yes, that, what is in that letter is just we use the city of Lisbon as a template.
But you can make anything you want to.
Yeah, you can, I think the state statute sets some parameters to it. I don't know that often. Set some guidelines, but no, we're not married to that, that figure or anything like that.
Is this normally applied to any kind of hotel business that say, like, for instance, like a bed breakfast, maybe they only have two or three rooms, four rooms?
What is proposed, and the state tax, the state taxes, in their sales taxes, only apply to entities that have five rooms or more, something like that. Or it gets a little convoluted in my reading of the statute. What we propose is to follow that basic, again, that template. So it would not cover, you know, a mom-and-pop bed breakfast type thing. It's an entity that has at least, that has over five rooms in a single location.
Thank you.
Is Dan, Dan, are you working with us now for us?
I do, yeah. We've been looking into it, Lance and I have been discussing it, and some of the issues that they brought up, we've been talking about. We've made some inquiries with regard to the others' office and attempted to contact the Department of Taxation also, because there are some interesting questions as to whether or not the 3% that the city might have proposed would be deemed to be subject to the division you're talking about, because it's not, it may not be considered to be the additional tax from which the split can be made. That's a tough question, and I don't, I don't have the answer to that tonight. And also, I could point with regard to the additional tax on the properties above the Columbiana County line, and whether or not it would be in addition to the 3% already charged by Columbiana County. I don't know the answer to that yet either. So it creates a kind of an unusual situation where you might have 3% in Columbiana County, 3% in Columbiana. Does it, do they piggyback on top of them? I don't know.
Right. Yeah, that's.
So those are the things we have to, we have to review. And I, but I think the biggest question as far as your organization is concerned has to do with whether or not there's a split available, because if the split is not there because the 3% is not deemed to be the additional tax, it's the original, initial tax, doesn't do the organization any good, because that all goes into the general fund of the city. And that's another question we have to try to get an answer to or consider doing.
Right.
Well, this, this type of tax is fairly common all over the country. My prior job, I spent more nights in hotel rooms than I lived at home in the last years. And I've seen with sales tax and the bed tax, rates as high as 15% to 100% in some locations. So adding a 3% tax kind of thing is hardly anything compared to what most regular travelers see in a lot of locations. And I think given the circumstance that someone else could come in and impose it on the city, and we get no benefit other than maybe to go to our portion, to go to our tourism board, I really think that we ought to look at it very seriously and consider the, you know, the possibility of it. I think the benefit to the tourist, to tourism board is an extremely positive aspect of it. Whether or not the city needs the money is a whole other question considering the tourism business.
I also think that it's one of the few taxes where the city and all of the residents benefit, and the residents don't have to pay for it. I mean, it's not every day that you have a tax where you receive the benefit and don't have to contribute. And I don't think that there's a business that it would hurt, because every other hotel that when you go to Salem has a bed tax, but Columbiana County has a bed tax, Lisbon has a bed. It's not like someone's going to not choose to come here because of that, and it benefits the residents. I mean, it helps pay for infrastructure without the cost on us. So it's one of the few taxes that I personally support because of that. And I'd like to thank you guys for having the foresight to bring it to us.
Have you looked around the surrounding areas at some point in time? Can you give us a, say, a 25 or 50 mile radius to see and give us some input back? What do other communities charge?
The Mahoning County charge is 3%. And there are several townships in Mahoning County that also charge a tax. And the interesting one is Beaver Township. Beaver Township has a 3% tax. Are you aware of that?
No.
This is information from the Department of Taxation. So we've got a 3% Mahoning County tax, we've got a 3% Beaver Township tax. And it becomes even more convoluted here, because when the city conformed its boundaries and we took in all that area in Mahoning County, that became Fairfield Township in Mahoning County. So there's a question as to whether that Beaver Township tax affects the Mahoning County tax, whether or not it's 3% or 6% up there in Mahoning. And I'm not sure of that, the answer to that question. We're trying to find this, find out. And with regard to, let's see, in Mahoning County, Sebring, Austintown, Wardman and Cantor have the taxes, and they're all 3%.
Okay.
They're all 3%. And of course, cumulatively, you have 3% to the counties and 3% to the township. So you have, I think you have a 6% tax in that, in that zone, I think. And then in Columbiana County, we've got, East Liverpool has a 6% tax. Now, they show Lisbon having a 3% tax here, but I thought that the ordinance was 6%.
I thought it was 6%.
And so that's an uncertainty. This is, it says 3% on the tax department's number, so you'll have to check that.
I was going to call you to look into the statute to see if maybe there was a change in the statute, and maybe Lisbon had not updated it to.
Possible. Of course, Lisbon is not, Lisbon is not in Columbiana County alone. We're unique in the sense that we flow over into Mahoning County. It adds to our list of questions that need to be answered. And then Salem has one, but they aren't, Salem's at 6%, and they're not collecting any at this point in time. And Elphrun and Saint Clair Township has 6%, Elphrun through. That's, that's where we are for the surrounding areas. Apparently Columbiana County has never taken an interest in doing it, because I think probably because the location of most of the hotels in this county have always been assessed, if you will, by the locality. Those are all guesses. I'm just offering what information I have. So we're looking into it, and hopefully be able to, maybe we can get together, Dave, and like, review what we can. Figure it out and see where, see where we go from there.
I think Tourism Bureau is to be complimented. I said years ago that Columbiana needs a gimmick. And I mean that gimmick is to have people come to town, spend their money and go home. Tourism Bureau is working on that. We get the benefits and we don't have to give them water, sewer, electric, school their children and their head. That's good profit. Good job, folks.
So then, Lance, come in. Oh, let's see, here we are, I've got the recording of the council meetings here. Though we don't have this last one updated on the internet, it should be tomorrow. I was hoping it was going to be done today, but it should be tomorrow. And we've been in contact with the school, actually today, so we hope to get these city council meetings back on the cable network. We've got the, our video requirements are now, we think that they can read them now as of 3:00. I had a manager's meeting with the entire management team and we did go over some emergency contingency plans and, you know, we do, we do meet with EMAs, County EMAs representatives, you know, a couple times a year. And we're all going to go to a seminar, well, I shouldn't say seminar, it's a talk that the safety councils put on. I have, we've had several meetings regarding the water plant. We're just keep trying to investigate and make sure we're making the sound decisions. Let's see, for the budgets, we're, Mike and I have met with several of the supervisors thus far and we hope to have you something by February 18th. And I've invited all of them, all of the supervisors to come in on the 18th and talk about their wish lists and maybe, you know, the direction that they're going to go this year for 2014. Met with efficiency smart representatives regarding several projects for the city, including streetlights. This building, these lights, you're not even going to be able to buy here soon, so we're going to have to get all those upgraded and we'll end up getting a rebate on that. And also ways that we can reach out to our communities, our citizens a little bit better than what we, what we have been doing to let them know about efficiency smart. All the results of that health insurance study, hopefully we should give you a presentation on the February 18th. We have a insurance meeting on the 12th to review everything with DC Wellness and then that's right before the 18th council meeting and then they'll come, so they'll be at the next council meeting to present the findings. As far as the water plant, we had a water line break this last Friday. Wastewater, we had a problem with a Metzrow lift station, but guys took care of it and we changed the operating procedure out there. We did have one backup there, but we hope to, we hope, the goal was to eliminate that lift station out there at Metzrow because currently we're pumping water, we don't really need to be pumping, we could just grab it. There are plans to do that. Hopefully we can look into doing that this year. For the street department, we've been found and salting during the recent weather. We continue to follow the salt shortage. Jesse and I met, I mean, teleconference today with Director of ODOT, Mr. Ray. It was over an hour meeting, everybody in Ohio I think was there discussing the salt shortage. Right now we're holding our own. There's a lot of communities that aren't. So it's, you know, it's, it's very serious. So over, over the next couple of weeks when you're driving, wherever you're driving, be careful because the, the communities are out of salt. So whether you're, you know, wherever you're traveling, you need to be careful. And ODOT also is running low too. So it was a, it was a pretty sober meeting, but like I say, we're, we're coming up with a plan where actually ODOT's is presenting a contingency plan of their own that you'll probably hear about on the 11:00 boost, I don't know, your tomorrow or something. But it was nice that they reached out to us, so we, we, they will be under that meeting. Electric department, still haven't heard back from the testing down at the wastewater plant, but we hope to do that soon. Doug's been working with getting some reports ready for, that will eventually be incorporated into the software that we're going to use for the new billing that will be integrated so our new bills will have more information. And I think that's right.
Any other major? Questions on the bill list? Moving to old business, due to the length of the year, does this, can I have a motion reasoned by Title Only? Dan?
McBean?
Yes.
Schoninger?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Okay. Ordinance number 14-0-2750, second reading. Ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for Columbiana, Ohio.
Seven.
Second.
Any questions? Dan?
Schoninger?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
McBean?
Ordinance number 14-0-2751, second reading. An ordinance submitting section 5.2 of the Policies and Procedures Manual of the City of Columbiana, Ohio.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Any question? Dan?
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Schoninger?
Ordinance number 14-0-2752, second reading. An ordinance submitting section 1 of ordinance number 12-0-2713, establishing rates of pay for part-time employees as a firestone pool for the city of Columbiana.
Seven.
Seven.
It's just a change in. Dan?
Simpson?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
McBean?
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Ordinance number 14-0-2753, second reading. An ordinance submitting section 1 of ordinance number 12-0-2712, establishing wage schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees in the city of Columbiana.
Seven.
Dan?
Becker?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Yes.
Schoniger?
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
There is no new, no new business. We have an executive session to discuss purchase of property. Before we do that, there's too many people, you guys want to do that some comments now? That'll be the lead action, it's very, people have to stay.
Sure, why not?
I have a couple of questions for you after which you can stay.
I'd like to say that over the weekend, my electric went off.
Few times.
And I am so glad that in the past, we thought of a cross-connect. It's my understanding, if not correct, one substation went down?
Yeah, we lost our feed to the south substation as I was having some problems and I received a call that they were getting on off lights. And so by the time I returned the call after I called my guys out, I called back into the station and I said, well, it's back on now. So I was in transit to my son's basketball game and I got another call and it was about an hour later and they said it went back out again. So I was in contact with First Energy Transmission Dispatch. And they said that they, they notified me that there was a problem and they hadn't found it yet. So with our system, we have backups, so I was able to turn that feed off basically and switch it to our north feed. And then, you know, I heard, I heard reports of East Palestine was still off till 7:30 and we were all fine here, so.
Well, I was running my power saw. I thought, I got a heater running and I'm running the power saw, one outlet, I must have blew the fuse, blew, blew a breaker. The time it took me to check in the garage and that was okay, and walk in the house mumbling because it's dark in the basement, the lights all come back on. So I, I was out less than that. Good job. Thank you.
I'd have a comment. I think it's very, very nice to see so many faces here within the last several weeks. The room has been more fluid in the past and I, I think it's wonderful that you guys want to know what's going on in your community and it's refreshing, it's being able to send it to all of us to see that people are watching what we're doing here. And thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a quote for the Chamber of Commerce banquet is coming up on Sunday, February 23rd. You all should have got your invitations. If you didn't, let me know and see that you do get one. This year we're recognizing three community award winners, Paul Rantz for Lifetime of Service, our very own detective, Wade Bowley for outstanding community service, and Preston Straney, the Young Citizen of the Year. Plus we have five businesses receiving awards for expansion and renovation. So that will be held out of the links on Sunday, February 23rd, so get your reservations in.
I have to come twice.
You have to come twice.
You sent me two invites.
Yes, you did.
Multiple person.
Yeah, you're right, I do. I'll go with that.
All right, I need a motion to go into an executive session for the discussion of purchase of property.
Second.
Sauer?
Yes.
Yes.
Callenger?
Yes.
Simpson?
There's no action now? Yeah.
Becker?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't know.
Have a good night, yeah?
Yes, it is.
Right, I'm going to steal it. Good, that's why I said. Number two. I mean. Yep. I'm all against somebody trying to sell. My first two years.
Wow. Wow, really, wow. Yes. I've already been told right now. Can we do this on the phone?
I don't know. I can't remember. Do you type them back? I'm switching to the address.
Yeah. I'm going to.
Seventy two, seventy seven, seventy eight, seventy nine, eighty seven. I'm for a white shirt and a black one. But this is the idea, you know, right? Twice these days, just twice again.
I'm calling about, I'm not absolutely.
We have, we had a meeting.
This is the thing.
Thanks, folks. Nice job. Why? As long as it's for me. We need to, we need to do it for years. Doing that again. We're going to need this. Once you get, once you get the name, you do come back and you consider about retiring. What we'll do is just like we did with Hurst County, we'll retire or quit the auxiliary police. We called them up instead of police, but I forget it, the council said you can't quit, you're an auxiliary policeman. You know where you're going. You're off the line. They figure out what you're doing. Breaking into the. So the hot dishes. Life's. You're a big room. We should keep. We're. We're. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And that's. Well, I will, I will. I will reach out to. This is. We're. We're not getting. We're. We're. They come and get. Because you know. You have convenience. You have. You have. Maybe. This picture. If I could. Picture. And he was trying to. Which I haven't got. The same. Yeah. You ever seen? It is. I was like. I'm looking at. At least you want to like track. Yes. Yeah. And it's the one. We're taking a power. I guess. I don't know. You ever seen? Why I was like. I'm looking at. Me too. At least you want to like track. Yes. I was careful. And it's the one. We're taking a power. I guess. I don't know. I'm saying the favor. As you said, you've already got. I know. I mean, I think. Go around. Maybe you guys can figure this out. It's off. No. Transition.
Nobody comes forward yet? Nobody has come forward yet? Not even the smaller ones?
I'll put the people not there, I mean, you know, if we live out there in five years.
They do want it in place. They just want to get in that gear.
Yeah, I don't know either. You know, we kind of did. We didn't have any accounting expertise to help us out on the application.
Don't feel bad. Everybody that's trying to make this thing about. I'm involved in another organization.
All right, yes. Okay, thanks Dan.
I'm on First Energy, mine's thirteen and a half six years.
Only because, you know, the regulations and polar things. They're lined. They're lined right now. That's not those lines.
Yeah, because we.
You're just using the play too much at your house. I'm more than that. I don't know if they say anything to you. I'm discussing where you are and what. Do you want to just hold it there in my house? Just leave me a message from around here, okay? I don't know which one I made. They flew him in.
No, no, just the statute sets it up fifty percent. They would be entitled to fifty percent of the additional tax. It's complicated and obviously it's not. We're still looking into it, so we don't have any definitive answers yet. But those are the questions that were asked. But those are the questions that were asked. But those are the questions that were asked.
Do you ever want to do this to your hands? Do you ever want to do this to your hands? Do you want to be around? Do you ever want to be around? Come on here. Come on here.